improvement, change that situation, obviously, it's been several years. Trash insubtation, our bill is 20,000 roughly a year. That's a clearing account, so the money comes in and it goes out. We're not actually keeping up, and I know that there is a lot of dissatisfaction with our current trash vendors, so we may want to look into if we void that contract, looking for alternatives that might be less expensive or will have to increase our rates. Lacey is local law enforcement continuing yet. I didn't put anything in the budget because until 2028, we still get public safety lit money. And we have been using our public safety lit money to pay the marshal, pay the fire department, and pay various costs associated with law enforcement. Like, we bought the new, or deal, new to us police car using that public safety lit money. Park donation fund, I did not budget. There isn't a whole lot of money in there, and I suspect whatever is in there and appropriated for this year will be spent this year. If we need to, we can do an additional, there's, I think there's around $200 in there. And I am budgeting the opioid unrestricted fund of money. Oddly enough, this settlement for opioid for the state of Indiana, we got money, and we're gonna get a little bit of money all the way until like 2036. But it's in the unrestricted fund, and therefore you can use it for any lawful governmental purpose. So I'm sure we can think of something we could use that for, probably park-related maybe. So then, the next, so that's your advertisement. Oh, and the tax levy that I'm advertising, of course, though you already know what we're gonna get. You saw it on the front. I'm advertising 99,907. Now, that's just something that I was trained to do when the DL Jeff, we did this all by hand, that you always advertise a little high in case somebody at the state or the county makes a mistake, and you guys are not rolling your money, so if I can get you a couple more dollars, then I wanna do that. So then, the next document is your budget form one, which is the spending plan by fund. So this details the areas that I am, that I believe you would be spending money. Again, it is exactly the same budget that you had last year. General fund is the exact same budget. The others are based on how much money is coming in. So, do you have any questions about the spending plan?
No.
No?
Could I ask a question?
Just as soon as I finish. You'll get your chance, Joyce.
Yeah.
All right. The last form is budget form two, which is the revenue report by fund. And these are the revenues that the state has indicated that we will receive. I do wanna call your attention on general fund to the income, or the revenue line identified as R138, local income tax certified shares. That's the, that is the lit or local option income tax that will go away in 2028. And the only possibility of replacement revenue requires the county, Montgomery County, to agree on an annual basis each year to include a lit rate in their overall lit rate for the county. So, all lits are going away as they currently stand. There are new lits that are supposed to take effect in 2028, but every county will have to opt in to them, and they'll have to do that annually. So, again, the legislature meets twice a year, or two times before all of this comes into play, but my understanding is, is that they are going to continue on the same path that they have adopted. So, that's a significant loss of revenue to a town that their general fund is 142,000. So, 30,000 loss per year going forward. So, as you can see, these are the, the state has given us these revenue numbers, and that's what's been built in. So, council members, do you have any questions before we go to public hearings? If there are none, then I suggest that we open this up for a public hearing and ask if anyone from the public has any questions or comments. Joyce, I know you have a question.
I think I heard that the rates, the budget estimate is the same as last year.
Yes.
Under insurance, that increases because there are buildings that are torn down, buildings that are damaged, so your insurance is not really adjusted.
The thing is, is that we don't have any more money, so what will end up happening is what we would normally use for stuff will end up going for a jerk.
Insurance will always come first, so we don't have that.
No, actually, I just got information from the insurance company to review, and we probably won't have it finalized until after the budget's adopted.
But we're looking at the Spartanian building, the new building, and the things that have been torn down.
Yeah, they're all included in that.
Right.
Hopefully, none of the things that have happened in the last year will have an impact on us. But hopefully they don't. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, ma'am. Pardon me? I don't know. Do you know?
I'm asking you.
I don't know. The last census, I think they said 209. But that presumes that that includes children as well, so if you're trying to figure out who's paying taxes, basically, anyone who owns a building or a lot of grass is paying property taxes. If they own property, they're paying property taxes. So, the thing about, so it doesn't matter how many people live here. That doesn't have an impact on that. The only thing it does right now is who pays property taxes. But the reason, what the legislature did, so for taxpayers, there's, SB one was adopted with tremendous taxpayer relief built in. Over the next four years, the, for example, if an accountant told me that a house valued today at 300,000 with all of the deductions that the legislature has added in, that house will only, will be on paper worth 100,000. So, our property taxes are based on the net assessed value, the total value of property in the town. So, if your house is 300,000 today, value on paper, but after all of the new deductions, so the goal is tremendous property tax relief for taxpayers. However, what that also means is an inability for cities and towns statewide to raise enough money to even possibly operate. So, there will be significant changes. The implication is, is that it's in the legislature's opinion, this is rumor, that cities and towns are going to have to find other ways to fund their operations and to deliver services. And some people believe that some smaller communities will end up eventually unincorporating. But I'm not sure what that means for communities that have water and sewer it is, because those will still have to be operated. So, my thought is, is that those would be converted into conservancy districts. But they've also adopted significant restrictions on the rates for conservancy districts. So, I, I'm not sure what the answers are. I'm hoping that the next two legislative sessions will give us more information so that we can plan the future. I don't know what the future holds for towns. Does anybody have any other questions?
We've built 155 meters, Dave. That includes your apartments, buildings, buildings, malls, everything.
How many?
155?
155.
So, we send 155 water bills.
Yes.
So, I guess that would be households.
Very few businesses, so that's not too.
Ah, okay.
So, I've got three, four, 55, 56, 57.
Whatever's going on in the community area. The opioid money that you said that comes in, any difference at all? You said it's just a small amount, is it like? We've, we've only got 400, 400 and some odd dollars in the last three years. It's a very tiny.
Okay.
Yeah. It's actually, we have to, the reporting that we have to do on that, you'd think they were sending us a million.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously. I just filled out the report.
You can use, you can use that money as needed.
It is, what it's called is unrestricted, so the money can be used for any lawful governmental purpose. That's the catchphrase. Anybody else? Okay.
We can close the public hearing?
Yes.
Do we have a motion for that?
I wouldn't hurt.
Motion to close the town budget public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, next item, the new business, Voice Cloud, Tom Financial Software Services contract.
Yes, so Keystone Voice was acquired by BSNA, which is a software company out of Michigan. And because Susie Bass is a Keystone installer trainer, they are offering Wingate a migration at roughly the same cost as what we've paid in the past for Keystone, which is amazing because I know towns that are getting quotes about 40,000 for an install. So, this is a cloud version of the Keystone software that we're currently using, but it will also migrate into a higher level platform, which is really interesting. And I strongly urge you to do this. One, because it's cloud-based, and two, because someday we all have a choice. If we do it now, we get it for the same dollar that we're paying for our Keystone software as it is. And if you would like, Susie can probably give you more information generally.
So, I mean, the only question I've got is, you know, if they wanna give us that now, but at some point, are they going to?
Once, once we have it, it's just maintenance.
So, and I asked them what the maintenance would be anyway, since they sent us this. Because I have about seven clients that they want me to convince to switch, so, because they, I kinda have a little bit of a fear with that. So, they offered it to me for us. So, we're kinda like, not a pilot, because there are tons of other ones, but we saw it was to get in cloud for about 40 to 60 thousand dollars. And eventually, it's gonna go away, most likely, Keystone, they haven't said for sure, but we're gonna cloud, for what we're paying, for what we got now. And we've already paid the maintenance for this month, so that, for this year, so they're just prorating it. So, we're only gonna owe the difference, and I'm not gonna have a shield until March or April next year because they wanted to go live December, and I said there's just no way December, January, and February. So, but if we get on board before the end of the year, then we go.
First question, do we need an answer tonight? What's time table?
We can do it next month.
Another question.
Yeah. I don't know when they're gonna change the price on it, but I'd say they're gonna do it before January.
I'll figure it out.
It's kind of their, so.
My thought process is, are you comfortable with?
I mean, it makes sense based on everything I'm hearing.
The one thing I'm not gonna do right now is the credit card option because what would, it's like 1700, $50,000 more, and we have payed up. It's working fine. I've had like 25 people this month pay in payed up. It's, it's more work, but it's, it's worth it for the residents to be able to use it, and it's not worth that difference in price. Because once they paid it, it would actually go right into the system, but, so we have that option added later. Add another thing.
So, we're building, we're gonna do your water meter, I mean, it's not possible, that's gonna be an extra problem.
And I did get, we did, we did, after a hundred and bazillion hours, this month, we got them here uploaded. And that was all. That wasn't the Keystone program, that was our year.
And I did email that contract to you, okay. I just, I was sitting here thinking, I couldn't remember if I had or not.
All right. Do you want to decide that next meeting? That makes better sense.
Fine.
Motion to table that for next meeting?
Second.
Is there anything that you'd like us to do between now and the next meeting?
In regards to that?
I mean, if you're channeling it, there has to, I mean, are you waiting for more information? Or is there a clarification? I'm just trying to.
Maybe just some more details of what those, what we're gonna have, because we've got that proposal, but.
Well, you've never seen this, because this is the financial software that, so, these are all of the reports that you currently receive.
Right.
So, all of the data, so every receipt, every bill, this is the same software that we use to deliver your financial reports. It's also the information that we use to send out the bills, the utility bills, so.
And the price is not any different. I mean, we're actually, we're not paying anymore than what we're, than what we're paying now. So, it's basically, it's $3, it's $3 a month a year.
So, the only difference here is cloud-based versus where is it housed now?
Right.
It's.
Right, she has it, it's loaded into a laptop that she carries.
I back up.
So, actually.
I do back it up to a flash drive, but we don't have a server.
But still.
So, actually, the, the idea, this actually ensures.
Yeah.
So, it's actually a much better product than what you currently have.
True, and the reason that, so Keystone, before they were acquisition by BSNA, they were actually working on a cloud product. And they were close to having the utility side done, but then BSNA came in, and they partnered their acquisitions with them, and now everything's in the cloud. We don't have payroll to support plus the council, so we don't need payroll. So, we just do it angle up. But, so, they already had it in place, it's a lot better. They were, Keystone was after the utility side, the cloud. So, it does, yeah, puts it all in the cloud, and it puts it all in the cloud, a lot faster than what Keystone would have been. Everything without a server.
The other thing that, because this is not an area, it's one of the reasons that we're here, is because you have to have someone who knows how to encode your financial data. The Keystone software is used in probably 85% of the cities and towns in the state. It's also why Susie and I have so much work throughout the state because of our familiarity with a product that virtually, I think I have three clients that don't use it.
And I have all five.
Yeah, she, she won't work with.
I won't learn a program, because I don't need it.
So, you're basically signing on with the same company that the town has been with for a number of years.
It's just putting it in the cloud.
So, we're gonna spend $6,200 that we're already spending, it's gonna fall off.
You're, we've already, so, it's 6,200 a month, a year, whether it's Keystone or BSNA.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We're not paying anymore than $3 more a year.
$3 more a year.
Okay, motion. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor that we adopt this?
Aye.
Opposed? The highest have it? Is that what you needed from us?
I just need a pile signature.
Anywhere.
Susie? Well.
I think maybe it doesn't have to be, maybe it just needs a few more minutes.
Okay, I'll call Parker tomorrow and find out what the story is.
To clarify this, or, I don't know. So, the cleanup day, you want on suburbic, if you know that?
There's a game like without.
The yellow was gone.
There you go.
Did you all like the little yard filter I created? Click on it, you, there you go, right there. Did anybody use that?
I believe my wife did.
I think Nicole did, too.
I was so excited when I had it.
Honestly, Susie, I haven't even opened my bill yet.
It's people like you.
But I gave you a check tonight, okay?
Yeah.
I just budgeted, I figured over a little bit.
Well, and speaking of the bills, so now that we finally started to work, I'm gonna have to go through each bill and really look hard, because I don't want anybody, because they had to estimate, to have doing my bills, because, you know, some of the stuff, so, I'm gonna see what I can. I had some people that had the money, but if they had a minimum, I would call them out. And then, so if anybody gets one, and they have questions on it, that's one. All, yeah.
Janet, Janet doesn't know anything about utility, what? I don't need utility bills.
All right, let's keep going, guys, so we can get this done. Additional appropriation table?
Table it.
Table it, all right. And then, ordinance for reserve officer position.
Heard nothing from the table.
Nothing there?
Table.
We have any new, any other new business that we'd like to bring forward?
The only other thing I threw on there, and I don't know if we should discuss it or what, but just making sure that we have our noise ordinance solid, and we've got what we need to force them forward.
If you guys want higher penalties, just email those to me, and I'll build them into the re-creation.
If you can do that. I suggest we all read through that, make any notes, and then.
That makes good sense.
Work with Janet, and we'll go from there. Couple other things that I have, that I've been thinking about. Number one, we have a police car that we need to do something with. Any thoughts, ideas?
Sell it. We gotta get stuff out of the purse, so.
Does it still have, does it still have all the equipment in it?
I think it has some.
Right.
Not all of it, though.
Darren?
No, that is true. Good call.
Good call. Thanks, Darren. I was looking at it from the standpoint that it's sitting in a garage, we're paying insurance on it, and it's not being used. I mean, if we're not gonna sell it, at least let's get it out and park it around town, maybe help to tourists and speeders.
Is there anything which, or someone who's giving it out, parking it, and then move it maybe two hours, to another location? Is there anything you have to do?
No, there's no such thing as a trap in Indiana, so we can put it wherever we want. Yeah.
Okay, now if you talk about, I tell you what, some of these gray cars. They're rolling.
Sitting in the old car lot right there? Yeah, every time I ride by it.
I know what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something to think about. Tasks and assignments.
I know, wait a minute. So, don't they have those, like, those little stroves that you can change the light bulbs? It would just be red and, red and blue, red and blue, strobing around?
I think we were just having the same conversation.
Okay.
Tasks and assignments.
I don't think we have any.
I have to make a few phone calls.
Janet has to do the rest of us, don't we? Any additional public comment?
So. So, Susie, she did not. Okay, let's, we have to think about this. Okay, so, if we were paying the bills for the pavilion, so, assuming all of the money's gone from the grant, and I, I actually think it is.
Once it's all, once the dust settles, it's gone.
So, then, any additional bills, the invoices should be sent to the attention of the town, and then the town would request a payment from the community foundation, which they can mail to us and will deposit. We would probably need to create a pavilion fund and have, we have to have a pavilion project fund, revenue, and expense line.
Well, we have to expense line, but the stuff, the, yes.
Um, no, because, well, it's specific for the pavilion. It's gonna be like K9, or it's designated.
So, are we gonna get permission to pay the bills before we get the check?
Well, last time, I handed her the check here, she wrote a check.
She didn't write the check. Well, she did, because she, I had a letter handwriting on it. She hand-wrote it, and then I posted it. Which we didn't. Well, I mean, and we could do that if council approves. I mean, you know, that, once we get the check, she could handwrite it out, and, especially.
Well, so, one of the reimbursable grants where.
Advance or?
Advance has to be appropriated, and we don't wanna do that. So, what we wanna do is have you give us a bill, and your committee has to approve or submit the request to Montgomery County. So, I mean, as soon as you get the bill, you should submit a request to Montgomery County.
Well, yeah, it's weird.
Okay, we can do that. What do you wanna do?
Go home.
Okay, you're like one minute from going home. Tell us what you want us to do.
So, Gary, if you all prove us paying those options, once we get the check, Kathy calls and says we have a check, here's the invoice, she sends the invoice, I can print the check in the software, send it out. We don't, if we don't have to wait for council approval at the next council, which could be anywhere from 29 days to one day, depending on how our meetings fall.
We just need to make sure that there's money in the foundation fund to cover it, because we're not writing checks that we don't have money in foundation.
We're gonna get the. Actually, what I, what my ideal fill would be that you would have the invoice and the check together and bring it to us, and then we'll write a check from the town's pavilion fund. Okay, so what I want you guys to do is vote to create a pavilion project fund.
Motion.
Second.
Andrew Kyle? All in favor?
All right, we're already passed that.
All right, so we have a pavilion project fund.
And you're going to write checks out of the pavilion project fund when you receive an invoice and a check from that. And the council is going to authorize that not to exceed the income coming in.
Right, well, it can't, because he's bringing in an invoice and a check to pay the bill. If there's no money to pay the bill, then they have a different problem. So, but we'll need W nines from every vendor. So if there's a special vendor that we haven't had, a W nine is required.
So it's just better to get one unless you know for sure.
It'll all come from Bill. Yeah.
Oh, we already have.
So do you need a motion to take that action?
You already did, you, you took it, you voted to create a pavilion project.
Pavilion fund, but we didn't tell you what to do.
That's a good idea. All right, go for it.
Motion to pay the bills out of pavilion fund as they arrive at the check. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. All in favor?
So that was. That was your motion, Kyle?
Second.
You seconded. Andrew. Kyle, okay.
I have a question, not given part, but all that, the standard, the city, like, before you get to the top. We're paying right five thousand dollars, you know, the cost of stuff, you have to go away. So you guys, now it's only like you guys, so the, we are back.
Right, so the. The problem is, is that since we already have tax caps, it just kind of goes away. But if, if you want to, if you're willing to be annexed in.
And right now, the town limit is just at the edge of your property, correct?
We got city water. We negotiated with the council, that made it the home council at that time. They need to test to review, I know, this is. It may end in the town fund.
It would actually be great if you did. It would be a voluntary, we, we need to talk to Stu, because since you are contiguous and you, this would be a voluntary annexation of contiguous property, those are easy. It's the, it's. So you, you know, but you're on the opposite side of the road, right? But you're, so are you right before bank? Yeah. Would you be willing to be voluntarily annexed?
You won't get ordinance violations, don't worry.
Dale? Are you going to? Would be nice.
That's not related to the town.
It's a great thought.
It's, it's an awesome thought, I like the idea, but let's add that to next month's agenda.
Well, because it's clear that we, we have folks that are on town utilities, but are not within the town. So we need to review all of, all of those. He doesn't have, does he have any utilities? I don't think he does.
We have no utilities. We can get him utilities.
That's what I was thinking.
May it be costly, but it wouldn't be that hard.
The thing is, is the only kind of annexations, just FYI, that go through are voluntary ones, so everybody be friendly.
So voluntary annexation next month.
Farm land, so I'm sure that would be other things from the.
He's on utilities. Is he, is he not in town?
Nope, he's on city water.
Right.
There's a lot more progress, you know, that's.
Yeah, they were smart.
There's back some of that now.
Okay, yeah.
About two miles over, so he's not, that's back to the corner.
Motion to adjourn? I shall move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh seven, it's been fun. Been a great group of people, thanks for coming.
Thanks, everybody. We need to, we need to think about that.